Article 6, Bylaw Amendment Noise Bylaw. To see if the town will add to Section 2 of the Town Noise Bylaw exemptions, the following paragraph: "D. Noise caused by agricultural, farm-related, or forestry-related activities, including but not limited to: the operation of farm equipment, sawmills, harvesting equipment, noises from farm animals, and the like." Is there a motion? Mr. Pitts?
Mr. Moderator, Jim Pitts, Precinct 7. I move in terms of the article except to add, as defined by the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 128, Section 1A, as amended from time to time after forestry-related activities.
Water, Mr. Moderator? Yes, Mr. Brooks?
It has "D" up there, and having just seen it in the back there, the exceptions under Section 2, it should be "I," "ID," "for," rather than "D."
Yeah, in the bylaw, is it now -- in the bylaw, is it now standing? But is he looking at a different -- okay, you may be looking at a differently-numbered version of the bylaw. Mr. Brooks?
The back table.
Oh, so -- okay, that was an earlier version that he has, anyway. Okay, the bylaw book, as it now stands, numbers were added, were they not, a few years ago, to some of the -- yeah, I can't -- I can't account for what you have, but the book, as it stands now, gives three exceptions under Section 2. Those are emergency vehicles, highway and utility maintenance construction, and public address, and this would be -- this would be number 4, number "G" rather. All right, now, Mr. Pitts, you have five minutes to speak to your motion. Did I have a second?
Yes.
You may now proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This town meeting passed a Amherst noise bylaw to protect the rights of individuals who -- Thanks, Steve. Is that better? Okay, thank you. This town meeting adopted a Amherst town bylaw to protect the rights of citizens who are subject to unnecessary noises, particularly during off-hours or resting times. At the time of the adoption, this bylaw, there was considerable debate regarding the circumstances which made this bylaw necessary. As a result, countless stories came about the parties that got out of control. I don't believe, nor do I think anyone believes, that it was the intention of this bylaw to prevent people pursuing their livelihood, particularly farmers in agriculture. However, because of the noise, the terminology in the noise bylaw, the Farm Committee has found that we are, in fact, vulnerable to complaints, and that's why we brought this article. Now, there has been a particular well-publicized complaint against the Wagner Farm. I will not get into the details of that because it is only helped to galvanize the issue as opposed to being the issue we are addressing. This bylaw change is not an attempt to target that particular complaint. I know myself, as a farmer, last fall, because of a missed forecast on early frost, my wife, my 13-year-old son and I were up to 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning pulling in about 5,000 pounds of winter squash. Now, we had both our tractors going, our truck, we were driving up and down our road, which is right adjacent to our neighbors in a residential community. And fortunately, there were no complaints, but, believe me, I was very, very nervous about the whole affair, but I had no choice. And that is -- that is what happens in agriculture. We are at the mercy of the rhythms of the seasons and the patterns of the weather. Make hay while the sun shines is not an idle thought. Grain dryers must rain-run 24 hours a day in order to dry grain properly. In times of severe heat, in fact, almost, there are few crops, produce crops, that can be harvested in the heat of the day, and must be harvested early in the morning in order to get it to market and fresh to our tables during the day. That, in fact, is the advantage of local agriculture. So this body has, in the past, been very supportive of agriculture, and as a result, agriculture is a viable undertaking in our town. It bumps up against the traditional developments of housing, and it is not an unheard-of problem. In fact, the reason we've gotten so much publicity, nationwide even, is because this is happening across the country. So I encourage you to vote for this, this bylaw, and if there are -- and I'll leave the rest for any questions that someone might have about the bylaw or about any specific issues. Thank you.
You may remain forward if you wish, Mr. Pitts. Does the Select Board have a recommendation, Mr. -- Ms. Awen?
The Select Board voted unanimously to support this amendment to the noise bylaw. We had lengthy discussion on it over several meetings. We researched the exact language in the Mass. General Laws as to agriculture, to see all of the activities that could be included under that. And we also support it because we really want to make a statement that we have to protect farming in Amherst. It's a valuable part of our community. It contributes to the commercial base in town. It's an important and honorable profession. We also want to recognize that as development pressure increases on our open land, that we will see some subdivisions creeping into areas right next to farmland, that house lots will inevitably, in some spots, appear along the roads with big farmlands behind them. And that's when you begin to have a kind of cultural clash, where people do move in and think about pastoral calm and tranquility, and don't realize that farms come with smells and noises, and sometimes a non-artistic clutter of equipment and things in the barnyard that wouldn't land on a calendar picture, perhaps. But we want to kind of support dialogue between the cultures so that we continue to honor the importance that farming has played in building this town, and the importance that it continues to play, and also recognize that to make it in farming today, you have to be multi-talented and diversified, and have a number of different ways to bring income in. So we think that this amendment will protect that.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Morton?
No position.
No position from the Finance Committee. Do you wish to be recognized? Yes, please come forward. You're a registered voter of Amherst? Please come forward. Identify yourself at the microphone, please.
Hi, I'm Ken Bernstein. I understand I have three minutes. I may need a bit more. I'll read as quick --
Do you want to request an extra minute, or two minutes, or one?
A minute, two. I hope I can do it in four minutes. I don't want to take any more time than this has already taken.
Okay, well, you decide what to request. You want to request one minute?
Pardon?
Tell me how much you want.
I'll request, I don't know, five minutes?
Okay. Mr. Bernstein wants a total of five minutes. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." You may proceed. Five minutes.
Having a few minutes to inform you of what I know about this issue and what I hope to see come from this evening's discussion of the proposed amendment to the -- I'd like to -- first, let me start again. I'm not used to dealing one-on-one, and I know this is counting against my time. I have a few minutes to inform you of what I know about this issue and what I hope to see come from this evening's discussion. First, I want to say to the Wagner family that I really apologize for any distress they've felt and may continue to. I'd handle it differently now, but I'm wiser now, and I've since met some of the people who could perhaps be -- who could perhaps facilitate that issue, who I did not know then. This past summer, I was awakened daily by the noise from the Wagner sawmill at 5:15 every morning, six -- well, six days a week. My personal and professional life was suffering, and I did not know the source of the noise initially, so I called the police. They informed me of the source, the general terms of the noise ordinance, and my options, and they explained I could ask the farm to not start until 7:00 a.m. under what they understood to be the ordinance. Some days later, again, I was awakened, and again, I called the police. An officer came, and I did as I was told, and I expressed the wish that the -- I went to -- they went to ask that the operation of the farm begin at 7:00. The time said to be appropriate for its operation. At each occasion, and it's, again, unfortunately too well-publicized, that it was about eight or 10 times that this went on. At some point, a sergeant came in response. I invited him in. He came into a room adjoining my bedroom. He listened. He seemed to hear and understand. It was kicked upstairs. I subsequently met with a lieutenant. I was invited then to speak to Chief Sherfa, who I met over coffee at The Black Sheep, to see how I could address this issue. He said, which should have been an indicator to me, that while he didn't go into detail, that this was a difficult issue, and he would have to consult with the town manager. I called the town manager's office, and I was told to speak to Alan Seawall. I talked to Alan Seawall. He said that after researching this issue, he found that indeed the farm would be -- should be included under the ordinance as it was written. And he said that next time my piece was disturbed, that I should ask that a ticket be issued so as to move the issue. So I did so. Some weeks later, I received a notice of the hearing, and I spoke casually to an attorney who was told not to worry. It was a done deal. I was quite shocked at a strong case presented by the Wagners and their attorney while I came in with a copy of the bylaw, and I thought for sure that would be enough. I even invited Mr. Munson, who represented the farmers, to take a look at my copy, in case he wasn't well-prepared. But of course, he had letters with photos and arrows, and, you know, how naive I was! I mean, I felt very small. So the attorney started, stated having letters from the Butters and from conservationists, among others. I, too, thought of going to the neighbors, as I was sure they would agree with me, but I didn't want to embroil them in this issue, and I felt, and put them on the spot. I thought my concerns were sufficient. I didn't know who else to see on this. I had good feelings for the police. I didn't go to the Wagners, as I've said, and as I said to Pat Wagner on the phone recently. I had hoped I would -- I had a good relationship with Pat, and I hope that by remaining anonymous that I would be able to pursue this through this mechanism, and I would still be able to go to the farm, bring my kids, ride the hayride, pet their horses, and have a lovely relationship. And I felt to go there and complain would not serve that end. Might I be wrong in this? Okay, I -- if I had it to do again, yes, I doubt this would. So I'm feeling pretty poorly served in all this, and more than a little embarrassed, and I certainly have wished many times we'd go away. However, the issue will no more go away than the sound of that sawmill, which will wake me tomorrow at 5:15, as surely as I'm standing here. I came with my family to Amherst in part because it's a community with working farms, and I'm a member of a CSA, and I love being so. It's a community, as I've come to know, which, though I'm hearing other sides, embraces diversity of opinion and heritage, and honors dialogue necessary to resolve inevitable differences. However, I'm feeling pitted against the Wagner and the media. I'm feeling now that I'm hated by the farming community who I understand, and see me as an archetype, a New York transplant, a Met fan, in your midst complaining of a farm. And I suspect I'm being called much worse, and I'm hearing as much.
Mr. Bernstein, your time is up.
Okay. What do I want? I want a win-win situation. I want -- I would hope that this community, rather than adding laws upon laws, would provide opportunities to people who move to this community to understand the nature of the community, to be informed exactly the kind of community this is, that there are farms, and that there be in place mediators, people to serve, to broker differences such as this.
Mr. Bernstein, I have to --
I'm done. Thank you.
Further discussion?
If you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Jenks?
Jenks, Precinct 7. If you think a little noise at 5:00 in the morning is a problem, you should live where I do. The aroma is wonderful and bringing the ball. However, one of the things that Amherst has is a mobile population, transient people in and out more often than staying forever. We have a very fond seal that we have, our town seal, the book for education and file for farming. To know the community we're moving to, it probably indicates a very important sign to be -- to come here, that we do farm. I am in favor of this amendment to our law, so that if, in fact, we happen to get people from other places in the country, they do realize that we may make noise because we're farming, or we may smell a little bit, but ultimately, we all will be educated. Thank you.
Do you want to take a seat in the front row, in case you want to say something later?
I'd love to sit.
Yes.
Catherine Morris, Precinct 4.
Are you a registered voter?
Yes, I have an "a."
Okay, would you come forward, please? Please identify yourself at the microphone.
Catherine Morris, Precinct 4. I just hope that it's narrowly defined, because I don't want the landscapers, roofers, construction workers to take advantage of this. Farming is one thing, but I hear many landscapers out last spring at 5:15 with those leaf blowers, and I think we have to be very, very careful and specific here. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Aspen?
I think that the last speaker actually brought up a point that I'm most concerned with about this amendment to the bylaw. I'm going to vote in favor of this, because I think that supporting farming is important, but I grow concerned when we privilege one portion of the business community over another. Another organization in this town that operates early mornings on a regular basis and tends to be noisy is the exercise community. Those businesses are loud. They play loud music. Things are loud there.
Mr. Calley?
I'm in my best ear.
Okay. Address your remarks to the moderator, Mr. Aspen.
I apologize, Mr. Moderator. Others are restaurants, who provide entertainment in the evening, and they are not receiving this privilege. And so as we move forward with this, which I do support, I would like to keep that in mind.
Further discussion? Yes, on the aisle there.
Brenda Bright, Precinct 5. I just wanted a clarification. A lot of the justification for both supporting this, which is for the farming industry, but also with the -- a lot of the cases that's in, that these are emergency cases, bringing in crops when they need to be grown, in the case of frost or whatever. And what I read in the newspaper said, in the case of the Wagner Farm, their justification for running so early in the summer was the heat. But you just seem to imply that they're still running at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning now, when it's so long for hot outside, and I wonder if this is true, and if it doesn't point up to something that needs to be addressed, or at least thought about, as to whether we're doing this for -- to enable things in extraordinary circumstances, or whether it's really okay to have pointy businesses running at 5:00 without any kind of time constraint on them at all, as an understood kind of common practice.
Mr. Pitts?
To the first question, I'd like to say it's very specific. It doesn't apply to leaf blowers and landscapers. It's very specific to agriculture as defined in the Mass. General Laws, and those kinds of activities do not apply. So I hope that that helps you understand that. To the gentleman about the specific, this business other than other businesses, first of all, that's one of the problems. Agriculture is a livelihood, is a lifestyle. It's not only a business. And as I said before, it is, and I won't exaggerate here, totally dependent upon the rhythms of the seasons and the patterns of the weather. And there are many things that go on. There are potentially many things that go on. There are some things that are -- go on routinely, that are early in the morning, or perhaps even late and through the night, like the leaving on of dryers for grain, or in the case of the Wagner Farm and other farms who must do whatever activities they can as early in the morning prior to the day when they have to get on with even more traditional actions on the farm, like milking the cows and getting harvested before the heat of the day. So, yeah, yes, there are traditional things that are ongoing, and there are emergency things. It is very, very -- it doesn't match an industrial-residential society, and that's what we're confronted with.
Thank you, ma'am, for that question. It's something that I, in my haste, overlooked. This was a pretty mild summer. I think we went over 90 degrees once. Mr. Wagner was asked by the magistrate why he has to begin at 4:30 in the morning, and he replied, "Because it's what I do. It's, in part, habit. It's something that he does. He's been doing for many years. I very much respect it, but I don't know that it's entirely in response, as Mr. Pitts would have us believe, and as may, in fact, be overridingly the case. In this instance, I think it does have a lot to do with habit. It's what he does. So thank you for asking that. What I do is wake up at 5:30 or 6:00, because I have a 3-and-a-half-year-old. So it makes my day a rather long day."
Ms. Wagner, do you wish to speak? You're a registered voter in Amherst, of course. Please identify yourself at the microphone.
My name is Pat Wagner, and I live in Precinct 2. Yes, I guess I want to respond a little bit to the Wagner Farm issue. Unfortunately, it's concentrating on the Wagner Farm issue, which I'm kind of sorry it is. Agriculture is an enterprise in this town of Amherst that is very vulnerable to a lot of things. In answer to the question about the hours, there are a variety of reasons why a mill would start at that hour. In the summer, yes, you do start early to avoid the heat. In the winter, you have equipment that has a longer warm-up time. They're diesel engines. They take longer to warm up, so you get the engines running. The mill itself may not even start operating until around 6:00, 6:30. But in the meantime, you have to get the machines running and going. The other factor is that there is a set of employees working there, and you can't just keep shifting their hours around, because employees don't like that. And it's very difficult to keep a constant workforce that you can rely on to carry on the business. So you're kind of victimized in that sense, so you have to keep them in mind, plus trying to keep the operation going. And yes, in this instance, as Mr. Pitts already said, there is also the dairy farm going at the same time, so it's a very long day for a farmer. They start early in the morning and they stop late at night.
By the way, somebody's glasses are up here. I'm not sure whom.
Identify yourself, please.
Cy Friedman, Precinct 10. I was one of the original drafters of this bylaw back in '87, along with Fran Fortino and a number of other people. I live on the corner of Allen and Fearing Street, and if you've ever been on Fearing Street on a Thursday or Friday night at sometime between 10:00 and 12:00, you will be greeted by what is known, not so affectionately in the neighborhood, as the screamers, the kids walking to their parties at 10:00, 10:30, 11:00, and then somewhere between 1:00 and 2:00 going back to southwest, drunker than whatever. I'm also a block away from all the fraternities on North Pleasant Street, which run from Fearing Street north. One of the reasons we went into this noise bylaw. Now, I am speaking against this amendment. I am speaking against it because I think that if we pass this amendment, what we are doing is we are making a change in a town bylaw because one person had a problem with one farm. As far as I know, and somebody may prove -- may say I'm wrong, in the 13 years of this bylaw, this is the first time that a noise complaint has been made against an agricultural business. I don't think that one complaint in 13 years, valid or not valid, I'm not taking that argument, is worthwhile changing a bylaw for. Are we going to take and have bylaws changed every time one person has a problem with somebody else in a bylaw? We might as well build a building and meet 360 days a year, but otherwise, town meeting will never end. I mean, I think in this case that it's something that, and I understand both parties, I won't get into who's right, who's wrong. As far as I understand it, the court ruled in favor of the farm. I understand the gentleman who's living next to it had some problems with that, but this is the way it works. I really don't think that we're going to go, we should get into this. I also have a specific problem. If it said "all the farming," that would be fine, but because of this one specific farm, the word "sawmill," which was not in the general law as far as an agricultural enterprise, was added, because it's the sawmill that's causing the problem. Does this mean that the next time somebody is woken up by a construction group working, that those who represent the construction industry are going to ask town meeting to exempt construction work, because they have to work early in the morning during the summer, in the heat of the summer, or they may want to work late at night? I urge you to defeat this amendment. It's not worth a town meeting.
Ms. Schiffer?
During the discussion before the Select Board of this, Ms. Wagner was there, and so was Mr. Pitts, I specifically asked if this had come forward because of this one complaint. And the answer was that this precipitated it, but that both farmers had, for a long time, gotten complaints about animal noises and smells, and so this was in line with their thinking and their requests. The other thing is that we did not take a vote the first time around, because we wanted to have a clearer definition of farming, and it was taken right out of the law. And although sawmill is not mentioned, lumbering operations are, so long as they're performed by farmers.
Ms. Pagano?
I'd like to call the questions.
Previous question has been moved. Is there a second?
Yes.
Two-thirds of you shall vote yes. We will come to an immediate If two-thirds of you shall vote yes, we will come to an immediate vote on the motion before us. All those in favor of the motion for this question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes seem to have it. The ayes have it?
No.
There's a doubt. Let's try one more time, I'll listen more carefully.
All those in favor of the motion for the previous question?
All those, is this coming through?
No.
All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, which requires two-thirds, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
I'm going to say it has not passed. Further discussion.
Isaac Benesra, Precinct Two. I know we could go on and vote on this, and then get on to something else, but I don't think we've finished the business. I think it's important that we have this discussion, so that whatever decision we make, we leave here feeling that we've attempted to answer the questions of all the people who presented tonight. Now, I live across the street from that sawmill. And one of the reasons I bought that piece of property on Strong Street was, the last time I had an open lot was when I was growing up on the Lower East Side, and it was a tenement looking down at a vacant lot, with a lot of stuff that doesn't look like the view I have today. I bought into that opportunity. I recognize that when I was coming to that spot, I would have an opportunity to share in something that I think is awfully important in terms of quality of life issues. Now, there are problems. And problem number one is, I can tell you this, this should have been mediated at step one. We didn't have to have this discussion tonight. I don't know whether it's the right thing to have a bylaw or not. I'm not talking about a bylaw. I'm talking about neighbors dealing with problems, and why we don't have a process that worked in this case, I don't know what the answer is, but I do know this, we ought to get something established. Now, I spent a part of my professional life as a family mediator, and I want to tell you, if I could get people together who were breaking up and who were fighting over their kids, I could have gotten the Wagners and this gentleman together on this problem. This is a cinch, because the moment we start talking, then we avoid the kinds of, this has been escalated. I think it took a lot of courage, and I think Mrs. Wagner would agree, it took a lot of courage for this gentleman to get up before this crowd, and, you know, and I respect this town meeting, because I think he was treated with respect. But it should never have come to this point. That's the point I want to make, that we have to set in process something called mediation, and there will be other kinds of problems. And the second thing we have to recognize is, I wouldn't have the view that I have, and the value to my property that I have, if we didn't have farmers who are really the conservationists in our state. We don't have enough tax money to buy all those farms. They go out of business, we're going to be into suburban development. So there is a trade-off, there's a trade-off, and I need to understand that. And I understand the problem that you have, but that's the way it is. It's never going to be totally free of some conflict, but I think we need to work it out.
Mr. Mazakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. May I ask you a procedural point? Is a motion to refer in order here?
Yes, it is.
I would so move, then, to refer this article to the Select Board. And my reasons have already been, I think, pretty much addressed by previous speakers who have numerous doubts and concerns.
Let's get a second first.
Sorry.
The motion's been made to refer this motion to the Select Board. You may speak, is there a second?
Yes, yes.
Okay, the motion to refer has been seconded, you may speak to your motion to refer.
Thank you. Particularly Mr. Friedman's comments got my attention. I support the farmers, absolutely, but I do think that we may be setting precedent here, which is not going to be very healthy for our future. I really think that the language needs some more work, and I think we need, as Mr. Benesra pointed out so correctly, that we need more efforts to mediate rather than legislate every time there's a complaint. So I think this needs more work, I think that they can recraft the language, which better suit me, this is a little bit broader than the various other exemptions that were added to the bylaw over the years. And I think maybe Mr. Seawell could be involved with that, and other persons who have a very serious concern about the issue, which has become very confrontational, and it never should have been. So I hope that you'll vote for this motion to refer, and we can, the Select Board can come back with another, a better crafted article in the spring. Thank you.
The motion to refer requires a majority. We will now debate the motion to refer. If that passes, we will be finished with this article. If it fails, we will be back on the original article. Speaking for and against the motion to refer, Mr. Sepulon?
Yeah, I'm, I wish to speak against the motion to refer. I certainly wouldn't mind taking up the topic if it's referred to the Select Board. But some of the comments I've heard did raise some questions in me, because I was the person who was the biggest thorn in the side of the folks proposing this bylaw. And it wasn't until I actually got the copy in my hand of what that Massachusetts general law says, that I was okay with this, because I was worried about the landscapers and other noises that could be associated with this sort of thing. And there's a long list of farming, a definition of farming and agriculture, et cetera. It's a long, continuous sentence, but it has in there "performed by a farmer." That's really a very specific use. It has to be a farmer doing this. I don't think that this is a broad exception that we're putting in here. I think one of the things, why it is proper for us to address this bylaw and to suggest this amendment, is that in the interim of time, there's more pressure on the farmers just because of expansion of development. We very strongly support APRs and trying to keep the open space open, and as time has gone on, I think this was an oversight in the bylaw, and it's quite possible that it was just an oversight because there weren't as many people living up against the farms. But that has changed, there are complaints now, I think there will be more complaints. We, protecting the farmers is like protecting part of the culture of the town. I think it's important that we do it. I think this is a very specific exception, and I think that we shouldn't refer it, we should just deal with it now. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Ms. Fisher, Precinct Five. I'm troubled also, well, first of all, I want to say I support farmers, and I'm very happy that I live near farmers, but I am in favor of the motion.
Speak up, please.
I'm in favor of the motion to refer because of the definition here that included work performed by a farmer. And the issue of the sawmill, and part of the justification for the sawmill is that farmers need to diversify, or this is part of agricultural work. And let me just say, I bought wood from Howard Wagner, and I appreciate, most sawmills do run early in the morning. Now, suppose a farmer finds that he's, that repairing equipment, in order to repair his equipment, he has to set up a shop and decides that he's going to make some money running an auto repair shop, and he wants to do that before he starts milking the cows in the morning. Are we going to justify any word at all on a site because it's done by a farmer? Suppose he opens up a canning factory, he turns his, these into dog poop, causing the farmer, is that justified? I think there's a problem with this definition, and as a law, this would need more work and more consideration. So I'm seeking favor of the motion to refer.
Someone we haven't heard from. I'm looking for a new face, but I don't see a new face. Ah, Mr. Coles, there's a new face. Mr. Coles?
We have been farming on Southeast Street for roughly fifteen years. I guess we were quiet until about nineteen fifty, when we bought the first tractor. Tractors were small then, they didn't make a lot of noise, we didn't travel very far with them. Today, it's a slightly different thing, tractors are much bigger, we travel more up and down the street than we used to. In the years we have been farming, I have had one neighbor who has stepped up, and although he didn't realize, he was talking to the man who operated the tractor, stated to me having, that he had retired from a teaching job at the university, and he looked forward to getting that extra hour or two of sleep that he hasn't been able to get before. We talked for probably two minutes or three minutes, and we parted on a friendly face. The last word that he said to me was, "If you want to come and mow that field behind my house, you come any damn time you please." So I have to agree with the previous speaker that if we can bring these parties together, and let them talk to each other, I don't think we have a problem. I do not support the motion to refer, I think the motion that we have here is an excellent motion. Yes, it's specific, it deals with a problem, but without that specificity in that motion, we could be back here however many times. I think we should defeat the motion to refer, return to the original motion and vote.
Ms. Alchieri?
Ms. Alchieri, Precinct One. I'm almost ready to vote against referring, go back to the original motion, but maybe other people are feeling the same concern. I want to support farmers, but I want to know if we don't have the noise bylaw applied to them. What recourse is there in the event of something really egregious happens? What if, you know, just as a hypothetical example, a large sawmill in North Amherst starts operating twenty-four hours a day? Or somebody who's doing aerial spraying and all kinds of garbage, or, you know, something that, granted, does not happen now in Amherst, but which the bylaw apparently deals with? Are there other means of recourse available to someone? I'd like to see a long answer.
Mr. Harvey?
Ryan Harvey, Select Board. Unless there was some other condition that entered into it, some health concern or something, I don't think that there would be other recourse. The noise bylaw is the only thing that we have that refers specifically to noise. So I think it's either that or nothing. I do want to say a word about the motion to refer, we haven't discussed this, I'm sure you are not looking for this business, but the, we talked about some of the issues that have been raised here when we had our discussion, including the question Mr. Asplin raised about other kinds of businesses. We talked about landscaping, not so much the leaf blower, which is a topic of controversy, I guess, everywhere else, but how about chainsaws and wood chippers? There's, if you have a tree that comes down in a storm, and it's on the side of your house, and you got to get it out of there, there aren't a lot of other alternatives to taking care of it. And even if you want to improve your property, sometimes you got to use some fairly noisy equipment. And I'm sure we could all think of other examples of businesses with a legitimate purpose that serves an interest we all have, that are noisy at times. However, we unanimously agreed that we thought this particular amendment that you have before you was worth doing, because we agreed with the goal that it was trying to accomplish, knowing that this would probably not be the end of the discussion, and that we might well be back in the future with requests to make other adjustments to this. It's been in place for, what'd you say, Cy, thirteen years? It's been sleeping quietly, it's now been awakened. I think that we'll find it a familiar companion, and if people have other changes they feel ought to be made to it, I think we have the processes in place to try to have that discussion and come back here with further improvements.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Way in the back, is that Mr. Wagner?
I love farmers, I live beside a farm. I pull into my driveway, some days there's plough supplies from the farms, some days there's sheep that have escaped that are eating my garden. They're fine with me, I would much rather have that than a condo that's all protected. That said, there are some parts of this, and particulars in this case, that are puzzling or bothering me. Sawmills, I think, are separate and apart from lumbering or forestry, and I think that sawmills are more on the manufacturing side of things, unless they are temporary rigs brought into harvest trees. I think forestry and lumbering refer to growing and cutting trees, sawmills refer to processing lumber into useful products. And I don't know that they're going to be included in a bylaw, the common farming per se. That said, I think that it's really puzzling that somebody moves in next to a sawmill and doesn't think, oh, gosh, maybe it's going to be noisier. Or a real estate guy sells you a property with his bucolic view, and then all of a sudden it's not bucolic anymore, why don't you go after the real estate guy? I mean, there's one aspect of this case, I think that mediation, you've brought in earlier, I think that that sawmill exemption is a part of an agricultural setup, opens the door to other manufacturing concerns that have been expressed before. I think that I would be in favor of referring this back to the Selectmen to tighten up the language. I would also think that during that timeframe, that mediation might be able to be brought to bear on this particular case, I think that's worth it. But I think that, that the idea of farmers being able to get into things like manufacturing is troubling to me, and I think that sawmills are perilously close to being a camel's nose under a tent on this.
Ms. Covelli?
Ms. Covelli, Precinct Nine. I vote against referral. With the specifics that are in that, and they're referring to this, that has all the specifics that we need in there, I think it covers everything we need to cover. The worry about other manufacturing, that goes around twenty-four hours a day, is sawmill, then you've got a right to say that that is manufactured, that's not farming. It goes on twenty-four hours a day. What they have to do for, to keep a farm going, you have to diversify, and you have to do things that skirt around the edges a little bit, but it's necessary to keep the farms going. If the farms go, it's so difficult to keep a farm going, that you have to have every resource that you can get your hands on. The other thing is that, that has been before, that as we move in closer to the farms, as communities get closer to farms, they start to pick up things about the farms that wasn't in the books about farms that they read about, and the smells in particular. And it's something you can't live with if you want to keep a farm going. Sounds a little bit weird, and other, one of those things, keep it going. Many of us that are in towns that have, that live near things that make a tremendous amount of noise, and we adapt it and get used to it.
Ms. Wagner?
I would like to speak against the referral for a major reason, and I'm talking about agriculture in general. Agriculture is at the whim's nature, it's at the whim, mother nature, basically, whether it be weather, whether it be animals, it doesn't matter. No matter what you're doing, you are controlled by outside forces. It could be the cow that's bellowing, it could be the donkey braying, it could be the rooster crowing early in the morning. It could be the frost that's coming, it could be the hurricane that's coming up the coast. You never know what is on the horizon for agriculture. You have to take and utilize every moment that you have. You don't have the opportunity to just take the week off and go on vacation, because you have the responsibilities back at home. As far as adopting this bylaw amendment tonight, I would strongly urge that you do that tonight. And based on the conversations we've had with the Board of Selectmen, it's likely that the noise bylaw will be reviewed in the near future. And if it is reviewed, all this is going to be coming up again, and it's probably going to be, I don't know if it'd be the spring when this would happen, or if it would be a little bit later than that, depending on the timeframe of how the town hall has, how their schedule is set up. At any rate, we would have an opportunity to review this again in the near future. It's not something that's an over and done issue. It can still be reviewed, it can still be resolved later on. But right now, if we wait till Spring Town Meeting... But right now, if we wait till Springtown meeting, you have the spring planting season coming up. You could have an early spring. You may have people wanting to get out in their fields in March. We've had early springs the last couple of years. The weather seems to be about a month ahead of schedule. If you... I mean, we had snow this week. It's the kind of thing where if we go ahead with this next year, we can look at it again, and if everything is going fine... I don't anticipate any major changes. It's only going to be whatever the Mother Nature dictates. But in the meantime, it would give the farmers the freedom to do what they need to do and not be worried that each time they start up an engine too early in the morning, or the time that their donkey brays or the cow bellows, that they're going to be subject to a possible violation of the noise by law. So, I urge you to defeat the motion to refer and to support the motion under this article.
Yes, sir.
Ed Burgess, precinct eight. I've raised sheep in Amherst for 35 years, and I guess many an evening when I have lambs born, they're born any time of the day or night, often, very often, at two or three in the morning. I imagine we've broken the noise by law a number of times, and I guess I've just been lucky that I haven't had a neighbor that's complained. But I... When I heard that this was possible, I thought it'd be a great opportunity to have a chance of not being so guilty for the activities that my sheep do.
Mr. Bentley?
I'd like to support...
Could you identify yourself, please?
Dick Bentley, precinct ten. I'd like to support the motion to refer because this bylaw, it really has one major weakness that we've been discussing it almost implicitly. I had an informal conversation with Mrs. Wagner a moment ago, and she hasn't convinced me that you have to run a sawmill at five o'clock in the morning. Here's the problem. The problem is that I think everyone acknowledges that there are certain activities that are permissible during the day, that are part of, you know, the normal background noise of life, that are less permissible in the evening when people are trying to sleep. But this bylaw only mentions these hours of 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. in the following connection: yelling, shouting, whistling, singing, and hooting, whatever that is. I think the bylaw is a mess. I think it's even more awkward. I'd like to support the motion to refer.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Ms. Floyd?
I'm Greenbaum, precinct five. I support the motion to refer. I'm very troubled by the inclusion of sawmills, which I just don't see as an agricultural activity. And I would either have to support referring it or exclude it.
Mr. Fallon?
Nathan Brown, precinct nine. I think there's other...
I'm surprised that we've managed to have this length of discussion with very little question about the fairness of this. I think that the bylaw is not as broken as it would appear. It already starts with, "It shall be unlawful to continue any excessive, unnecessary, or unusually loud noise." So, already, the unnecessary word is in there, and there is the potential to have things mediated. A lot of it has to do with how the thing is actually implemented by the police. And I think that there are some problems with the bylaw with regard to not being specific about times, about not being specific about how loud is loud. It just says, "It endangers a reasonable quiet, comfort, or repose." But I've known of situations, my next-door neighbor was sitting on his porch playing a guitar and was asked to stop by the police. He plays classical guitar. It really wasn't very loud, that I thought, but somebody had decided to complain, and they came and they asked him to stop. So, I think that there are some questions as to how the law is administered that need to be examined, but we really should do this within the context of being fair. Certainly, I am a supporter of farms, as anybody who's heard my continued speeches up here can attest. I'm not speaking against farms or farming, and I'm not saying that the activity should not be allowed. All I'm saying is that we should find a way of allowing the activity that we want to allow without leaving the rest of the bylaw so broken. And thank you.
Mr. Cosner?
I don't think I've ever followed Nathan as a speaker. I'm different from Nathan. Rob Cusner, precinct three. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission also, and a few of you know that, at least recently, I've been doing my utmost to also support farming. I'm going to also ask you to vote to refer this to the Select Board for a different reason. It's one that actually some of my colleagues in the front row can appreciate. I think that failure to refer this article, which does seem to have some flaws, I think it's particularly not consistent with the definition of farming under Mass General Laws of 128, section eight, 1A. I think that we'll save ourselves some money, too. The town's attorney in particular receives fairly good remuneration for his services per hour, and I think that by referring this back to the Select Board, getting the bylaw consistent and right, we'll save ourselves a good deal of time, perhaps at a future town meeting, as we've heard Mrs. Wagner say, but also we'll save a good deal of the very expensive time of our attorney and of our officials. And so, I do hope you will move to refer this to the Select Board and let the Select Board think through this very carefully about what should be in the bylaw, what shouldn't be in the bylaw. Just an aside, besides being a mathematician, I like to do a little bit of work to get ready in the morning. I like to do some carpentry. I bought some Japanese saws that are very quiet, but occasionally I need to use my power saw. My building permit says 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. I try to respect that tremendously, although it's been very tempting in some mornings when I really can't figure out how to prove that theorem to get up and run my power saw, but I just don't do it. So, keep this in mind. If we were to pass this bylaw, I might, you know, might disturb my neighbors. Seriously, though, we should try to make this something that's consistent, sound, and save us all a lot of time and money. Thank you.
In the third row there.
Now, in precinct ten, I'd like to speak in favor or against referring. And just mention that this issue of the sawmill kind of betrays how far we've come from agriculture, that it's even a question. Sawmills have always been an integral part of farming, and we perhaps just need to go back and, you know, resuscitate our education about the agricultural industry. It's always been an integral part of farming, and it's just the law that we're questioning it now.
Mr. Puffer?
Remove the previous question.
Previous question has been moved and seconded. If two-thirds of you shall vote yes, we will come to an immediate vote on the motion to refer, which requires a majority. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion for the previous question is carried. We have now before us the motion to refer this article to the Select Board. All those in favor of the motion to refer, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The noes seem to have it. The noes have it. The motion to refer is defeated. We are back on the main motion. Mr. Freed?
George Freed, precinct six. I know this says, "As defined by," but do we need the words "performed by a farmer" also?
Ms. Schiffer?
Thank you. First of all, I will answer that question in a moment. I've been puzzling over the sawmill concern. The sawmill appears in the article. The motion says, "Accept to add as defined by Mass General Laws 128, chapter 128, section 1A," and, if I may, the whole definition, because sawmill does not appear in it, "only lumbering operations as performed by a farmer." Maybe that's all I need to say. That's the only thing, plus forestry operations. Now, I will read you the whole thing if I need to. Could you just repeat your question? Sorry.
Where it says, "Noise caused by agricultural, farmed-related, or forestry-related activities performed by a farmer."
Yes.
Do we need those words?
No, because that's part of the definition in the law which is being referred to. That is the phrase that was emphasized by Mrs. Sapola when he first spoke to it. So, all these things, farming in all its branches, the cultivation tillers of soil, dairy, on and on, aquacultural, floricultural, horticultural commodities, the growing and harvesting of forest products upon forest land, the raising of livestock, including horses, the keeping of horses, the commercial enterprise, the keeping and raising of poultry, swine, et cetera, et cetera, these fur-bearing animals, and any forestry or lumbering operations performed by a farmer, who is hereby defined as one engaged in agriculture or farming as herein defined, or on a farm as an incident to, or in conjunction with such farming operations, including preparations for market, delivery to storage or to market, or to carriers for transportation to market.
Further discussion. Mr. Chris Ryan?
Chris Ryan, precinct two. I'm speaking in favor of amendments to the bylaw. I guess I don't have problems with the wording. I think it's clearly saying we want to add this exception of farming to the noise by law. And I guess I feel it's a way of saying that we want to go beyond supporting the concept of farms in this town and support the reality of farms in this town.
Yes, Ms. Greenbaum?
Ms. Greenbaum, precinct one. I'd like to make an amendment. And my amendment would be to delete the word "sawmill." And my reason for doing this is I'd like to see the article passed. And I did not vote to refer because I'd really like to see the article passed. The reason for it being, when sawmills seem to be the big bug in it that people, that are giving people all the problems, so I would like to delete the sawmill and ask you very strongly to pass the article with my amendment.
Before I ask for a second, Ms. Greenbaum, it was just pointed out that farm activities are defined in the general laws as including sawmills, and we... The article, sawmills that are operated by farmers. Is that correct?
Not what it says.
The general law that Ms. Schiffer read to us...
Not what it says.
Oh, excuse me. Just, all right. It's been questioned whether the general law that Ms. Schiffer read did mention sawmills operated by farmers. Ms. Schiffer, was I wrong?
Sorry, still wrong.
Ms. Schiffer, please.
It mentions lumbering operations but does not mention sawmill.
Okay. All right. The motion, Ms. Greenbaum? From the motion. Up here, where it's crossed out. It would be if Ms. Greenbaum's amendment... Okay, let's have one person talking at a time, please. If Ms. Greenbaum's amendment passes, the word "sawmill" would be removed. Is there a second to that motion?
Thank you.
Okay, I hear a second. You may speak to it, Ms. Greenbaum.
Well, I'd just say I would like to pass it. Meanwhile, the Select Board can talk about sawmills, and we can always amend it again next spring after the Select Board and anybody else interested would like to have a further discussion about the issue of sawmills. Meanwhile, we can pass the bylaw amendment, and it doesn't have the word "sawmill" in it, and we can always reamend it again any other time when people are happy with including sawmills.
Ms. Wagner?
Pat Wagner, precinct two. I believe that Ms. Schiffer is excluding sawmills, but if she goes on and reads the definition, it says, "Including preparations for market, delivery to storage or to market, or to carriers for transportation to market." My understanding is that sawmills would be included because it's preparation for market. Therefore, I think that Ms. Greenbaum's amendment would be in contradiction to the adoption of the general laws, and therefore, I think it would be rejected by the Attorney General. That would be my guess.
Ms. Knox?
I don't know how this fits in, but we have a farm committee of very experienced people. And I think a lot of this discussion could be pursued by them, so that if we had referred this to the Select Board, they would most likely have further referred it to the Farm Committee. I think we've discussed it as far as we can. I don't know how to put this into a point of procedure.
Well, we have before us now the amendment. Mr. Pitts?
This amendment was proposed by the Farm Committee, and we did discuss it in detail. I'd like to speak against the deletion of the sawmill. I have on the back of my tractor a three-point hitch, a cordwood saw. It is huge. When I crank it up, it sings. It's scary. But I have to cut wood because I do maple sugaring. I appreciate the comment. Lumbering, sawing has always been a traditional part of farming, particularly here in New England. And I think it's, even I relatively new to farming, didn't realize that until I got into farming, how much the harvesting of wood and wood products were important to my operation. Like I say, I have essentially a sawmill on the back of my tractor, which I spend hours on preparing wood for maple sugaring. So, I... That's my only comment, I guess.
Further discussion on the amendment to remove the word "sawmill." Mr. Ryan?
Chris Ryan, precinct two. Sorry to bother you. I was on the chamber committee that recommended that you pass the original article. We see farming as a special class of business, and to do so is in keeping with the sensitivities of the community. With regard to the whole processing wood, it may help you to know that the United States Forest Service is under the control of the Department of Agriculture, and there's a reason for that. It may help you to know that W.D. Cows and family have been practicing conservation long before conservation was cool, some 200 years, continuing to harvest logs off of thousands of acres of their land and the land of others, trees, which are a renewable resource. I trust the Wagners are processing lumber which has grown locally as well. I spend a lot of time in the woods doing trail maintenance, and I constantly come upon mill sites, some of them, I believe, old sawmills. This is part of the cultural iconography, if that's a word, of this, of our region, and there's just no, there's nothing wrong with the harvesting of wood and the processing of lumber in sawmills. It's completely compatible with traditional New England agricultural activities.
Further discussion on the motion to amend by deleting the word "sawmills." Mr. Irwin?
Bob Irwin, precinct eight. I'd like to speak against the proposed amendment. As long as it's a farm-related activity, I don't see that it's any of our business whether a farmer chooses to have a sawmill or not.
Are we almost ready to come to a vote on the motion to amend? Mr. Benazir?
I move to leave.
Okay. Mr. Benazir, point of order?
Yes. It appears to me that we are amending the article and not the motion.
Well, we're amending the original motion, Ms. Wilkinson. The original motion was to see if the town will add... No, excuse me. Is, "I move in terms of the article, except to add as defined." So, the motion is to add to section two of the town noise by law exemptions the following paragraph, D., "noise caused by..." dot, 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 and the like.
Does that include any opening?
Yes, it does. Farm equipment, sawmills, harvesting equipment, noises from farm animals, and the like. Now, that is the main motion that is before us. We defeated the motion to refer it. We now have before us a motion to amend it by removing the word "sawmills." The previous question has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
If two-thirds of you shall vote yes, we will come to an immediate vote on the motion to remove the word "sawmills" from the original motion. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion for the previous question is carried. We will now come to an immediate vote on Ms. Greenbaum's motion to remove the word "sawmills." All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. The motion is defeated. Are we ready to come to a vote on the main motion?
Yes.
All those in favor of the main motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is carried. The motion is carried. Mr. Harvey?
I move to adjourn until Wednesday, November 1st at 7:30 p.m.
Motion is to adjourn until November 1st, 7:30 p.m. All those in favor, please say aye. Second? All those in favor, please say aye.